At this time, can the Zoom host please start the webinar? Good morning, everybody. Welcome to today's New York City Council hearing of the Committee on General Welfare. At this time, can everybody please silence your electronic devices? If you have written testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone for joining us this morning. Today, our committee is holding a hearing on examining the screening process and eligibility requirements for foster parents, as well as three bills: Intro 436, sponsored by Council Member Stevens, which would create a juvenile justice advisory board; Intro 554, sponsored by Council Member Rivera, which would address child protective caseloads and workloads; and Intro 642, sponsored by Council Member Williams, which would require quarterly reporting on the amount of time children spend in the Nicholas Copetta Children's Center and other temporary placement facilities. Since many of the sponsors of the pieces of legislation are here, or will be shortly, to speak about their respective bills, I will not go into specific details of each. I want to instead turn to our oversight topic. Before the pandemic, there were several reports demonstrating the abuse and neglect of foster children had been subject to while in ACS's protective custody. Children were suffering with burns, bruises, and much worse at the hands of their foster parent or by an unapproved adult living in the foster home. I am glad to know that since then, ACS has worked hard to reduce maltreatment in foster care by providing intensive monitoring, training, and technical assistance to foster care providers, as well as by developing new methods for foster and adoptive parent recruitment, retention, and support. The data that we are seeing shows positive trends. For example, in fiscal year 2021, 98% of foster homes had no incidence of indicated child abuse or neglect. While we recognize the hard work that ACS has put into ensuring that children's safety is of the utmost priority, we want to be sure that work continues regularly. At our last Foster Youth Shadow Day, which the City Council's General Welfare Committee organizes on an annual basis, our conversations with foster youth raised many questions. Today, this committee would like to hear more about the foster parent screening process. For example, we want to explore whether or not the process includes a mental health evaluation for prospective foster parents. We also want to hear whether or not the staff at ACS who take on these cases have appropriate mental health services and workforce development. I want to thank the administration, the advocates, legal service providers, volunteers, and any individuals with lived experience who have taken the time to join us. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today: Council Members Ose, who is online; Council Member Lee is next door for a vote, but she'll be coming right back in; Council Member Russler; Council Member Williams; and we've been joined by Council Member Rivera. At this time, finally, I'd like to thank the committee staff who worked to prepare this hearing: Mente Kilowan, Senior Counsel; David Comero, Counsel; Kristi Dwyer, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst; Maceo Torres, Trujillo, League Intern; Julia Harramis, Senior Finance Analyst; Rose Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director; Nicholas Montalbano, Senior Data Scientist; and my Chief of Staff, Elsie Encarnacion. I will now turn it over to the sponsors of the bills that we are hearing today to give brief remarks. Council Member Rivera?
Good morning. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Chair Ayala, for your consistent and unwavering leadership, and of course, for the opportunity to speak before this committee. Today, we will be hearing my bill, Intro 554, which will require the Administration of Children's Services to create an action plan to implement best practices related to the maximum number of cases a child protective specialist can manage in order to improve child safety and well-being outcomes. This plan will be made in conjunction with the Department of Investigations and input from experts in child safety and welfare. When it comes to the welfare and safety of children, we must ensure the city is providing the highest level of care and is able to deliver the specialized attention that every child deserves. We also have to make sure that the social workers who are carrying out this vital work are not given an unmanageable caseload. They must have reasonable expectations in their own work life. Incorporating the expertise of professionals in this field, as well as the Department of Investigations, is a key component to implementing best practices and delivering the highest quality services. I look forward to working with my colleagues in council and the administration on improving the way we handle case management with respect to child protective services. And of course, I want to thank my colleagues for joining me as co-sponsors of this bill and to the staff for working on this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Member. I will now turn it over to the Committee Counsel, David Comero, to administer the oath to witnesses from the administration. And I guess that we'll be joined by some of the other council members: Williams and Stevens, who are either on their way or voting next door.
Good morning. We are now going to call on members of the administration. We have Jess Danhauser, Commissioner of Administration for Children's Services; Ina Mendez, the interim Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Family Permanency Services; Stephanie Gandell, Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala and members of the Committee of General Welfare. I am Jess Danhauser, the Commissioner of the Administration for Children's Services. With me today is Ina Mendez, the interim Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Family Permanency Services, and Stephanie Gandell, the Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the screening process and eligibility process for foster parents, as well as the three pieces of legislation introduced today. I want to begin by thanking the thousands of foster parents who dedicate each day to provide care and support to the youth and children of New York City. Many of these foster parents are relatives or close friends of the children in their care, while others have dedicated and decided to open their homes to children in need that they do not yet know. I know that being a foster parent is both challenging and rewarding, so please know how grateful I am each and every day for all of the foster parents caring for children in foster care. It's important context that ACS is committed to providing targeted services to support and strengthen families, so that children can remain safely at home with their families and in their communities. We currently have an historic low number of children in foster care, with fewer than 7,000 children in foster care for the first time ever. In those situations, or modern history, I should say, in those situations where a child is in imminent risk of abuse or neglect, temporary foster care placement is a necessary safety intervention that we use as a last resort if there are no alternative safety plans available to keep children safe at home. For a child who has faced the trauma of abuse or neglect and removal from home, ACS has no greater responsibility than to provide a safe, nurturing foster care placement. We continually strive to provide children with a safe place, optimally in the home of a relative or other safe adult who the child knows, while we work with the family to address these conditions that led to removal. To achieve this, ACS contracts with and oversees 26 nonprofit foster care agencies that provide foster care placement and services for New York City's children. We are grateful for the committee's focus today on the important topic of how ACS and our partner foster care provider agencies screen, as well as train and support foster parents to provide safe placements for children. The New York State Office of Children and Family Services regulates and supervises foster care in New York State, including the certification and approval of foster parents and foster homes. State law and regulations dictate the safety requirements that foster homes must meet, and OCFS authorizes foster care provider agencies to certify foster parents. Foster care agencies and OCFS coordinate on the certification process, which involves child welfare and criminal background checks, home studies based on home visits, and medical clearances. Foster parents must be in compliance with criteria related to physical condition, character, motivation, and willingness to partner with the agency in providing services and carrying out the child's permanency plan. A careful evaluation of all this information, including three references, is used to determine whether a proposed foster parent is able to provide a safe and nurturing environment, and thus should be licensed by the state as a foster parent. State regulations require foster parents to be over the age of 21; household members must be in good physical and mental health; and physician reports must be filed every other year after the initial certification. Foster parents are able to be employed, and ACS can assist with the childcare when needed. Pursuant to state law, the process includes both a criminal history record check of everyone over 18 living in the home, as well as the completion of necessary forms to determine whether the applicant or any person 18 years of age or older who currently lives in the applicant's home has been subject of an indicated child abuse or maltreatment report filed with the State Central Register of Child Abuse and Maltreatment. Additionally, if the applicant or any other person living in the applicant's home lived in another state in the five years preceding the application, they must obtain such information maintained by the SCR in each state of previous residency. Pursuant to federal and state law, there are some types of criminal history that are mandatory disqualifiers and some that are discretionary. Foster parents are required by the state to complete mandatory training as part of initial certification, as well as annual refresher training as part of a recertification. Initial training requirements are 30 hours of Model Approach to Parentship and Parenting, or MAP. The goal of MAP is to prepare individuals and families to make an informed decision about becoming adoptive foster families. This decision is made mutually with the foster care agency, and is based on the capability and willingness to take on the role and develop the skills needed to foster and/or adopt. Given that the safety and well-being of children in foster care is so critical, ACS has some additional requirements beyond those set by the state related to training and oversight of foster parents. ACS now requires foster parents to participate in the Trauma Responsive and Informed Parenting Program, or TRIP, which is both training and coaching support for a total of 24 hours over eight sessions. TRIP is a learning program that prepares and supports foster parents and child welfare professionals. Learners develop a trauma-informed lens and are equipped to understand and respond to their youth's challenging behaviors, should there be some. The program includes a variety of learning approaches, including homework, assignments, videos, group role plays, and other interactive activities. To meet the needs of LGBTQAI+ youth, ACS also requires all foster parents to be affirming and to participate in training specifically related to the needs of LGBTQAI+ youth. In addition, as part of our LGBTQAI+ Youth and Care Action Plan, we're working with several providers and LGBTQ organizations on new foster parent recruitment strategies. For instance, we have provided with LGBTQAI+ recruitment best practices, information on community-based agencies they can partner with to increase recruitment opportunities, and a checklist for LGBTQAI+ inclusivity. Because ACS is deeply committed to the safety and well-being of every child placed in our care, we have established a process to review foster home certification that is above and beyond state requirements. As part of our rigorous oversight and monitoring of foster care agency practice and performance, ACS audits a sample of initial home certifications and first-time annual recertifications. While the foster care agencies in OCFS are ultimately responsible for certifying the foster home, we want to be sure that ACS-contracted foster care agencies are following the correct process. ACS believes that children in foster care should be placed with kin, relatives, or family friends whenever possible. Research shows that children in foster care are placed with kin, experience less trauma, better maintain community and family connection, have greater overall well-being, and are more likely to achieve permanency through reunification, adoption, or guardianship. ACS has focused on increasing placements with family members, and in fiscal year 22, 56% of children who entered foster care as a result of an investigation of suspected abuse or neglect were placed with kin. That's up over double from 26% in fiscal year 14. Similarly, the proportion of children in foster care who are currently living with kin has increased from 31% to 43% today. To accomplish this increase in kin placements, ACS implemented a range of strategies specifically aimed at identifying kin and increasing the proportion of children and youth placed with kin. When placing a child in foster care, our process is first to extensively search for kin, asking children, youth, and parents if they can identify potential relatives or family friends. As appropriate, we speak to relatives, neighbors, family friends, teachers, coaches, religious connections, and other trusted resources. Since 2019, ACS has had kinship specialist positions in the ACS Division of Child Protection. These staff have the dedicated function of finding and engaging kin caregivers for children entering foster care. For children who aren't initially placed with kin, ACS contracted foster care agents implement targeted efforts to identify and move children to kin when this is in their best interests, including continuing to talk to children, youth, and family members about who is in the child's life that can be a foster parent. Unlike many jurisdictions, ACS and our foster care agencies work to make sure that kinship caregivers can become certified as foster parents to receive the same financial stipend and case planning support that non-kinship foster parents receive. When kinship caregivers are identified for an emergency placement, ACS performs an expedited home study, so the children may never need to spend one night outside of kinship placement if possible. The assigned foster agency then proceeds to work with the kinship foster parent to complete the full home assessment and training process to become certified by OCFS. We offer resources to eliminate obstacles for kinship caregivers, such as providing beds or other furniture the children may need, paying for safety enhancements like radiator covers, providing a daily stipend to cover incidental costs, and arranging childcare assistance. As you know, ACS is in the process of re-procuring the foster care system, but ACS and our providers are already implementing the funding and programmatic enhancements in the RFP now. As it relates to foster parents, providers now have more resources for foster parent recruitment and for providing and supporting kin. A key component is that we've changed the funding structure, so that providers are no longer reimbursed by what are called "care days," which eliminates incentives for longer lengths of stay, while also giving providers more financial certainty and flexibility. In addition, ACS has made a significant investment in new resources as part of its new enhanced family foster care program, which is replacing the separately contracted family foster care and therapeutic family foster care programs. EFFC provides increased therapeutic resources and services responding to the increased acute needs of children in care, and allows for greater flexibility of services based on the changing needs of child and family. Additionally, the blended EFFC model allows children to remain in the same foster home and program as their needs fluctuate over time. To support the continuous efforts to recruit, support, and retain caring foster parents, the Division of Family Permanency Services provides an array of technical assistance and support to provider agencies to expand the pool of caring foster parents in New York City. The Home Away From Home framework supports foster care agencies to develop processes to support children placed with kin, improve their practices of transitioning children to kin, increase foster parents' capacity to care for older children and children with complex needs, and improve the recruitment, training, and support strategies to retain a greater number of foster parents. Our foster care agencies use a variety of approaches to support foster parents. These strategies include planning events facilitated by foster parents to recruit within their own social, family, and professional circles, creating mentoring opportunities between experienced foster parents and newly certified foster parents to provide supports to each other, and leveraging foster parent ambassadors who develop team-building activities for other parents, and holding roundtable discussions that are facilitated and intended by foster parents to discuss training needs or any other topics impacting foster parents. The Mockingbird model implemented by one agency creates clusters of foster homes in close proximity. These parents provide support and backup to each other on a regular basis. In addition, ACS recently rolled out Binti, a web-based tool to assist foster parents and foster care agencies with the certification and recertification process. This software has helped to streamline the process and make it paperless. Finally, this past year, the state settled a lawsuit and then passed legislation to increase the rate provided to foster parents to care for their children. While ACS was deeply disappointed that the state did not include any state resources in the budget to help pay for this increase, we believe that increasing the rate is an essential support so that foster parents are able to provide for all the needs of children. Intro 642, 2022, would require ACS to create quarterly reports regarding the number of days children are placed at the Nicholas Copetta Children's Center, the Youth Reception Centers, and the Rapid Intervention Centers. ACS's preplacement continuum includes the Nicholas A. Copetta Children's Center, operated by ACS with a capacity of 100 children, and four Youth Reception Centers, or YRCs, with a total capacity for 45 children. When children must be removed from a parent due to an imminent risk to the child's health and safety, ACS makes every effort to immediately identify a foster home setting to meet the child's needs, with priority for kinship placements. We have established preplacement settings to make sure we can immediately meet the needs of a child following removal or reentry to care in a safe and nurturing environment, while we expeditiously work to find an appropriate foster home. Our goal is always to make sure stays at the children's centers or YRCs are as short as possible. The YRCs include the Sheltering Arms Reception Center, which has 15 beds to serve boys and girls ages 0 to 12; Mercy First Virginia Residence, which is a 12-bed co-ed facility for youth ages 14 and up; the Good Shepherd Services Shirley Chisholm Center, which is a 10-bed facility serving girls 18, 14 and up; and Harcher St. Vincent's Fox Hills, which is an eight-bed co-ed facility for youth ages 14 and up as well. YRCs are settings where youth can be engaged in a trauma-focused, strength-based clinical assessment and case planning process that will result in the implementation of a safe, supportive, timely out-of-home placement or family reunification plan. ACS also contracts for three rapid intervention centers, which are not preplacement facilities, but instead provide respite and residential care for youth in foster care who need crisis stabilization and other assessments. RICS provide a short-term, stabilizing, and safe environment where individualized assessments and strength-based therapeutic treatments, plans tailored to youth and family needs, are developed. The Children's Center is a 24/7 temporary foster care preplacement facility, where we provide care and support for some of New York City's most vulnerable children and youth who enter foster care due to abuse or neglect or family disruptions. The Children's Center serves approximately 1,700 unique children each year and newborns up to age 21. 65% of the children reside at the Children's Center are there for 10 days or less, and 45% of the children reside there for less than three days. As you can see in our most recent monthly flash report from September 2022, the average daily population at the Children's Center was 68 in August 2022, and on calendar year to date, it was 76 children. The census this week has fluctuated between 58 and 74 children. We are taking a number of steps to try to reduce both the number of children at the Children's Center and the lengths of stay for children at the Children's Center. This past year, the Children's Center added its own kin finding unit to further intensify efforts to identify safe kin resources for children as an alternative to the Children's Center or foster care stay. The Office of Placement Assistance, OPA, within the Division of Family Permanency Services, works closely with foster care agencies to facilitate the matching of children into appropriate, safe, and caring homes. In addition to using the Placement Module, an automated referral system, OPA has leveraged other practices to engage agencies around expediting placements through the exploration of available homes that best meet the needs of children. The Children's Center is staffed with childcare specialists, social workers, programming and wellness staff, education and engagement, and visiting specialists. There's also an onsite, full-time pediatrician and nursing staff. The ACF Bellevue Mental Health Team and JCCA provides additional clinical services to youth with high needs. ACS also contracts with Safe Horizon to provide consultants specialized in engaging youth at risk or victims of sex trafficking. In addition, we have onsite Cure Violence Credible Messenger mentors, Youth Advocate Program, Family Finders and Advocates, a KSAC, and ACS Peace Officers to help maintain safety. ACS has taken a number of steps to improve the experience of youth at the Children's Center, including creating four additional programming spaces for children to use for community meetings and developmentally appropriate programming workshops and recreation, and a multi-faith room, which offers children a private, quiet area to practice their faith. Programming offers youth healthy, pro-social, and emotional outlets, provides enrichment and recreation, and helps reduce the impact in systems of trauma. The Children's Center programming ranges from therapeutic art classes, financial literacy, music, performing arts, nutrition, fitness, youth voice, and empowerment, health education, and much more. Staff also chaperone youth to Broadway shows, professional sporting events, movies, and celebrate holidays and diverse cultural traditions. ACS looks forward to discussing this bill with the council. Intro 554, 2022, would require ACS in consultation with DUI and other experts in child welfare and child safety to create an action plan to implement the recommendations in the workload study ACS published in 2019 pursuant to Local Law 18 of 2018. Specifically, the legislation will require that the action plan include best practices related to the maximum number of cases child protective specialists can manage to improve child safety and well-being outcomes. The Child Welfare League of America recommends child protection staff carry 12 cases during the investigation or assessment phase. The counts on accreditation standards state that caseloads should not exceed 15 investigations. For quite some time, ACS has had a target of our child protection specialist caseloads not to exceed an average of 12 cases. To maintain this, OMB enables ACS to hire enough CPS to stay ahead of attrition. For the month of September 2022, the average child protection caseload was 8.1 citywide. It was 8.9 in the Bronx, 7.7 in Brooklyn, 7.4 in Manhattan, 7.5 in Queens, 8.5 in Staten Island, and 9.3 in the Office of Special Investigations. Thus, ACS caseload averages remain well below 12. ACS hires CPS based on need, and we currently have a strong staffing position thanks to our successful hiring and retention strategies. We recently onboarded a class of 124 new CPS who are currently in the Training Academy. For the remainder of fiscal year '23, we plan to hire two additional classes in February and May of 2023. ACS looks forward to discussing this bill with the council. Intro 436, 2022, would create a Juvenile Detention Advisory Board to advise ACS, the mayor, and the council on issues related to juvenile detention. New York City's juvenile justice system safely serves through a trauma-informed lens in the community whenever possible and with appropriate structure and supports in place. DYFJ oversees services and programs for youth at every stage of the juvenile justice continuum. Our continuum includes community-based services for the youth who are at risk of delinquency, as well as for their families. In addition, we provide secured detention services and oversee non-secured detention for youth who have been arrested and the court has ordered to be detained while awaiting resolution of their cases. We also oversee the Close To Home Placement System for youth ordered to be placed by the family court. And finally, ACS will soon oversee the city's alternative to detention programs as they transfer from Mockjay to ACS. ACS appreciates the council's interest, and ACS benefiting from the input of others, including youth and parents who have been personally impacted by the juvenile justice system. ACS has a new deputy commissioner for our Division of Youth and Family Justice, Nancy Ginsburg, who comes to ACS from Legal Aid with over 30 years of working directly with and advocating for youth impacted by the system. Our new deputy commissioner is in the process of setting up a juvenile justice advisory board to lend expertise to us as we seek to continuously strengthen our efforts to prevent youth from coming into contact with the system, to meet the needs of youth in the community, detention, and close to home. We look forward to discussing this bill with the council. In conclusion, ACS is committed to strengthening all components of our work, from child protection to foster care to prevention to juvenile justice to childcare. We look forward to continuing to partner with the council as we work together to support New York City's children, youth, and families. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to recognize that we've also been joined by Council Members Stevens, Riley, and Hudson. We will now turn it over to Council Member Williams for remarks on her bill.
Thank you, Chair. I am proud to have introduced Intro 642, a bill that will require a quarterly report on the amount of time that children spend in a children's center or a temporary facility. This report will be provided to the mayor and the speaker of the council and include information about the number of days spent in a facility, the type of facility, the age of the child, the level of care recommended, the number of children placed in a facility for the first time, and the number of children placed in a facility on two or more occasions. This data will allow us to assess the information and determine how much time a child spends in placement facilities across all ages and levels of care, so we can truly evaluate if there are any trends or patterns. We obviously don't want children lingering in these facilities for a long amount of time. This bill will also provide transparency around ACS practices, which may not be accessible to families who have concerns. It will also ensure that we are making decisions based on sound data rather than anecdotal evidence alone. So I hope these reports will help us understand how well we are serving our most vulnerable residents, young people who have been removed from their homes due to abuse or neglect. And thank you, Chair Ayala, again for bringing this bill for a hearing.
Texting with my own child. I'm taking off for as anyone on a 17-year-old. He's almost done. Teenagers.
Mine will be 14 tomorrow, so.
Yay! Thank you for that. And Commissioner, can you kind of walk us through what the process is? Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I forgot. I am so sorry. I forgot that I also had... Council Member Stevens is going to give remarks on her bill. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Ayala. We appreciate you. So time and time again, we hear folks say that the people closest to the problem always has a solution. Intro 436, which is to create a juvenile detention advisory board, is a way to give family and young people a voice and input to really address some of the issues and concerns and help the juvenile detention center move in a forward way. This will create transparency and really allow for new ideas and experiences to be brought in and having a holistic approach to the juvenile detention center. So I'm very happy to be the co-prime sponsor in this bill and excited to hear feedback from ACS about how do we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Stevens. So the question was... So the question was regarding the certification process. Can you kind of walk us through what the length of time is for that?
Sure.
Process from beginning to completion?
Sure, and then we'll, if okay, we'll give some information about the training as part of that. So when a child is coming into foster care, as I described in the testimony, we immediately begin a search for kin. So I'll talk first about the kin certification process and how that works, and then the non-kin. So we have staff at every level in child protection, at the Children's Center, at foster care agencies that are really focused on identifying family members or other trusted adults in a child's life. We're thrilled that when children are removed this year, which is a pretty historic low of a number of children that we're removing, fifty-six percent of them are able to go to a family member or someone that is trusted in their life. This is a huge accomplishment by the entire system focused on this, our foster care providers, our child protection. When that family member is identified, the child can be immediately placed in that home following an emergency home study. So the child protective staff will go assess the home environment of this identified adult, family member. We will do what we call a local clearance, so that we're looking at our SCR history, if there's anything that we have there, and making sure that there's no red flags in the immediate. And then the children are placed there. And so for many children, they never have to spend a day in between. They can go directly from their home to their aunt's home or their grandparents' home, or someone in their life, a coach or a teacher. If the... So that is sort of the kin process. For both kin and non-kin, then the sort of more thorough process begins of a full home study. All of the adults in the home, we are checking criminal background check. We're checking state central registry. On the criminal side, we do FBI, and we do state, and any state where they've lived in the last five years. Then there are mandatory disqualifiers, so violence is... Most violent felonies, there's a long, long list that we can get you, but these are state mandated. There are, you know, anything harmful to a child, abuse of a child, we cannot move forward, and we're searching for... So the child would never be placed in that home. The... If we have certain crimes, our discretionary. And so if there is a drug offense ten years ago, and we feel like this is a safe place for the home, there's been nothing in between that time, ACS and our foster care providers have discretion to certify a home in certain discretionary areas. The training, both for non-kin and kin, is very extensive. It's thirty hours of MAP. We are going to be building something called TRIP. During this process, especially for the non-kin homes, agencies are assessing. They're looking at references. They are going to the home on a regular basis. They're interviewing. They're looking at income. They're looking at medical. They have to get a physician's report, and so they are working with and watching the behavior of foster parents during the training. We are really thrilled to be introducing something called TRIP for all of our foster parents, and I'd love to ask Deputy Commissioner Mendez to speak to that for a few minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. So TRIP is Trauma-Informed Parenting Program, and it's designed to provide therapeutic training to foster parents and agency staff. And TRIP talks to foster parents that are participating in the training and the staff about how to look at things from a trauma lens. And so they understand trauma. They learn about trauma. And with this trauma lens, they're able to better look at the thoughts, the feelings, and the behaviors, and kind of interpret what's going on from a child's perspective as opposed to reacting to it. So we're hoping that this will improve their capacity to work with children, because we know their needs fluctuate, and sometimes they're having moments. And so this will increase their ability to support children as they're in foster care. So TRIP is eight weeks, and it's three hours each session.
Does this happen while the child is already placed or before? Could you repeat that question? Does this happen prior to the child?
MAP happens before the child is placed, and TRIP is now rolling out to all existing foster care parents and new foster care parents. So it'll happen after the placement.
Okay, so the entire process for certification is what, two weeks, six weeks?
It depends. It depends on... So for kin homes, it's ninety days we have. So the child's placed, and then we have ninety days to complete that process. You know, for foster parents, often they're... The time that they go forward to be certified is their third, fourth, or fifth sort of inquiry. So sometimes they'll reach out to an agency, and then they'll say, "Okay, not... I'm not right now." So that process, agencies are always looking to expedite it where safe. They can get it done as quickly as ninety days with all of the background checks, and if we get all the clearances from the SCR. But typically, it can take six months. It can take a year. And so there's folks who are in the pipeline. So a lot of our recruitment strategies are really making sure that when a foster parent is interested, we seize the moment to get them into it and the training. Foster parents get trained in a group setting, and there's some individuals. And so some of the better practices are really around creating peer groups. You know, foster parents who've got a lot of experience mentoring foster parents who are new. But also, you know, I was at a foster care provider for many years. Some of the most powerful experiences I had are when a cohort of training of foster parents, they came together. They're on a group text. They know how to get things done from the agency. They know how to support one another. Every foster parent has a backup, so it's part of the certification process that you have to have somebody identified who we also clear, who can care for the child if there's any emergent need, right? Because we don't want children, you know, bouncing all over someone they don't know. Many often, these foster parents are backups to one another. And so that camaraderie, that, you know, being a foster parent has... Is a huge challenge, and as I said in my testimony, it's obviously very rewarding. But you're opening your home. We are now asking you not just to come because you might want to adopt a little one. That's not what we need in foster care right now. We need homes for teens. We need homes for large sibling groups. We need homes for kids who have complex medical needs. So you're getting children to appointments, to visits, to... And so we are really looking to support foster parents more, which is why we're thrilled about the rate increase, because paying for things like transportation, all the visits, you know, for babysitting care and all of those things can be costly. And so we're thrilled that the lawsuit was settled in the way it was. We wish the state would actually pay for the settlement that they went into. But in any case, we're glad that the rate has been increased.
I agree. I agree. I used to be a foster parent. I don't know if I disclosed that, but many years ago, I had three boys, two siblings, and then one that would come in sporadically. It was a fun time. I had them for five years, and I still keep in touch with them. But I'll tell you, it was not easy, specifically around the level of support. And this was back in the early nineties, so I'm, you know, I'm assuming that a lot has changed since then. But I found that as a foster parent, part of the challenge was, one, I was very young, so I don't even know how I got certified. And I was housed with two teenagers who were housed in my apartment, and it was difficult to kind of, you know, navigate. And for the most part, I think that we did well, but where I think, you know, I always felt that there was a disconnect between, you know, the caseworkers and, you know, and my household. I felt like I spoke more to the psychiatrist and the therapist than I did to, you know, the caseload manager. And so in terms of... So I have a couple of questions on that. But in terms of recruitment, what does that effort look like? And where is the agency in terms of the number of potential foster parents that have applied to date? Like, are we, you know, are the numbers where we need them to be to really manage any upcoming situation?
So first of all, I learn something new about you every time I'm in your presence. It's amazing. I mean, the context for the nineties is, you know, forty thousand-plus children in care, and today we're just under seven thousand, which means we got a... We have an opportunity to get it right every time, and that's what we're trying to pursue. As far as recruitment, so there's twenty-six agencies that work with us who are certified by the state as foster care agencies. These are nonprofits that you know very well. They are responsible for recruiting within their community catchment areas, so they table at a variety of events. They're out on social media. They have staffed lines for recruitment. But what we find is actually the most powerful recruiter is a foster parent who has a good experience. So nothing in recruitment is more important than foster parent support. The support that, you know, the responsiveness of the case planner. The... Many agencies now have foster parent coaches that are foster parents, and they get a stipend to work with other foster parents, so that there's someone on the line in the evening. Our new EFFC program, which is going to add therapeutic supports, will have somebody who's also like a sociotherapist type who can be responsive in addition, because the case planner is running to court and getting lots of different documents. We need people who can really be responsive when the case planners aren't there, and this new model really helps with that. COVID took a big hit on recruitment. You can imagine that, you know, opening your home in that moment was a scary thing for many New Yorkers. We're seeing around the country children who are not... There are not enough placements. We're very, very fortunate here in New York City that we have a strong network. But COVID brought us down, and we'll get you the exact numbers. We are starting to see trends of foster homes, non-kin foster homes opened up that are moving in the right direction as we come into this next phase of the pandemic or whatever we want to call it. So we are focused really, really hard with our providers. As I mentioned earlier, we are now paying providers based on sort of a program budget rather than the number of care days. So we have increased the capacity for providers, especially the special medical providers. We have five agencies that provide special medical foster homes, and so we're really working with them in particular, because it's not just a numbers game. It's really quality and making sure that we have the right type of foster home. So we'll make sure... Nina, do you want to speak to the pipeline?
Sure. So we... In fiscal year '22...
Can you move the mic closer a little bit?
Yeah, thanks. Excuse me. Sorry. So in fiscal year '22, we opened four-hundred-and-thirty-two new homes, and we're continuing to work with families through the certification process. As the Commissioner mentioned, we're using BINTI, which allows foster parents to log on and see where they are in the certification process, making sure they're submitting forms. And so it's easier because they know from the beginning, "I need to do this. I need to do that." And agencies can also monitor that process as well. And hopefully, we can get some data to let you know exactly how many families are currently in the pipeline at this particular time. So in fiscal year '22, we recruited four-hundred-and-thirty-two homes for the last fiscal year, and then as we started into this fiscal year, new homes are being developed.
But there hasn't been... Has there been a moment where the number of homes needed is a little... Is at a lower percentage point?
So we... Whenever you look at the available homes, and our Office of Placement Administration works on this every single day, there's always enough homes. It's really about making sure we got... We have the right match, right? So do we have enough special medical homes? There are some children that we have served at the Children's Center, and there's one young man who's recently placed who has very extraordinary needs. And so we're looking to try to find foster placement where that can work. Every once in a while, it has to be residential care. We're glad that we are a national leader. We only use residential care in less than ten percent of placements. But we... It's really not as much about quantity as making sure we have the right homes for sibling groups, the right homes for teens. So what we do is, in the Office of Placement Administration, is we reach out to providers to say, "Let's talk about who this individual child is, what their needs are, what the sibling group is, and let's talk about who you have." So there's a real exchange around, is there a match here? We obviously care about school stability in this process, so we're very, very glad that eighty-six percent of the children placed into foster care are staying in their home school, even if they are in different parts of the city. So we work very closely with the DOE on that. And we want to make sure that the foster parent can meet, and their network of support can meet the needs of the child that's coming to them or the children that are coming to them.
I can add one data thing that might help contextualize a little. As the Commissioner mentioned earlier, during the sort of height of the pandemic, it was very challenging to recruit foster parents. People weren't leaving their homes. They were afraid to let anybody in their homes. And so we're very close in terms of recruitment to where we were pre-pandemic. So, for example, in 2019, we were able to recruit and get four-hundred-and-forty-one foster homes. That went down to four-twelve in 2020, but now, as Deputy Commissioner Mendez mentioned, we're back to about four-thirty-two. So we're starting to reach the levels we were at before.
Did the number of children also decrease during the pandemic? Children that were put in placement?
Two things. Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Both the number of children in foster care and coming into foster care has continued to reduce, and the number of youth and children going to kin has increased, which also reduces the number of recruited foster homes we need.
Just in the last decade, we've gone from, you know, well over five thousand placements a year to lower than thirty-five hundred. And what we're seeing now, even as reports come back up to pre-pandemic levels, we're working really hard to make sure we can provide the preventive services that families need and not have the number of children who are coming into care. And obviously, the work that we're doing around kin, we want to get to a place where that is the norm, and we're starting to sort of tip towards that, that it is the norm for a child to be placed with somebody that they know. There are situations where that's not possible, and this is why you hear us talking so much about special situations, you know, young people who are really struggling, teens who are really struggling behaviorally or otherwise, folks with little children with complex medical needs. These are the places we are calling new foster parents to join us. And I do just want to say, for anybody who's interested, to call our 676 Wish Line. We need foster parents who want to co-parent with parents, right? We are not looking to just have an adoptive system here. We're looking to solve the problem at the root cause. And so some of the most beautiful situations I've seen as a leader of a foster care agency is when a child goes home and the foster parent becomes auntie and uncle, and that support system has really been strengthened. And so becoming a foster parent today is about choosing to enter into that. And so it's why they need more and more and more support and training. And but the fundamental thing we need from foster parents is someone who truly loves our kids and can be non-judgmental to their parents and work with them in a process of co-parenting, unless it's unsafe.
Yeah, yeah. Has the... What is the current caseload ratio?
For foster care case planners? So we budget for twelve, and that's children. So to... There's... We plan for twelve children per case planner. That's ten children typically who are in active foster care, and then we expect a couple of children who are on trial discharge home or who might... They might be working with in a different capacity as they transition from care. So twelve, and it's often folks think that's cases, but it's actually twelve children. So if they're working with a sibling group, there'd be less.
Has the agency seen any staffing shortages throughout the pandemic? And how has that impacted?
Yeah, it varies by provider. Twenty-six children. I think the providers absolutely have experienced staffing challenges. They're promising coming into this phase. We're starting to see promising results of more and more capacity. There are, you know, they have case planners. They have these sociotherapist roles. They have coaches. And the providers have a whole... And the providers have a whole array of mental health and behavioral health services funded through Medicaid that doesn't come through ACS, but is a really vital part of. So, at this point, the system has been so strengthened that even with the staffing challenges, there are folks to be responsive to kids and families. But the providers are working really hard. There's, there's been increases in the foster parent rate. All of the new resources that we're providing also include additional dollars for staff. Because that frontline workforce is what makes or breaks this, along with our foster parents.
But you, but you, we're, we're saying, because I just wanna, I wanna be clear, that the number of, the ratios has been relatively at the twelve, right? It hasn't really deviated much from that?
So, we look at, every month, we look at the number of the agencies and what percentage of their case planners have under twelve. And we have, for the, for most of the case planners remain under twelve in each of those months. There's some agencies that'll have a particular challenge for a while, and then they'll hire a backup. So, there have absolutely been challenges, but we're, we're closer and closer to twelve across the board.
No, but, I mean, that's important, right? Because the more families you have, the more difficult it is to be able to kind of, you know, have that, that one-on-one time that you really need to, you know, make informed decisions, right? On, on that specific household. So, how often are families visited at home?
I'm sorry?
Is there a requirement? Is there like a number of times that a caseworker is assigned, is, is, you know, has to visit a family that has children in placement a month or a year? What does that look like?
Yes, so, so, and I also wanna say with this, the new contracts EFFC, the goal is actually going to be ten. So, we took the, what used to be treatment family foster care, therapeutic foster care, and, and regular family foster care, and essentially combined them and increased the resources. So, that is gonna bring the caseloads down to ten children. So, there has to be a visit in the home every month by case planners. During the pandemic, there were some exceptions around virtual visits. But we've come back to, to in-person visits. And so, there has to be that visit for every child in the home each month. And so, often is, it is much higher than that. There might be, you know, particular needs that they're meeting. There might be other people in the home, including some of the behavioral specialists. But the minimum is once per month.
Does that include a visit to the school to find out, you know, how the child is doing in school? If the child is up to date where, with their medical needs, their, you know, immunizations?
No, it doesn't. So, and, and if you imagine, this is sort of a, a staffing model for children and families that there's, there's a case planner. Now, once children are eleven, they'll also have a coach. There are roles within EFFC, the sociotherapist-like. They have, most of the children in care have care managers for their health and behavioral. And so, there's a coordinated approach at the agencies. So, if there's a coach in place, they might be the one checking in the school. There's some agencies have education specialists. So, no, that one visit does not include all of the variety of folks that we're partnering with to make sure children have their needs met.
Okay. And regarding the, the level of support that is offered to foster parents, does that extend to after-work hours? Like, is there a twenty-four-hour hotline that I can call if I'm a foster parent and I have a child in distress, or something seems off?
Yes. Ena's gonna speak to that.
Well, yes. So, every agency has a twenty-four-hour line that foster parents can call if they, if they're in need. Agencies also have home finding departments, and there's usually a contact in the home finding department that they can reach out to, you know, all hours of the night and on the weekends. And as the commissioner mentioned, agencies have created networks. So, they can reach out to another foster parent. And that foster parent maybe has experienced what they're seeing in their home at the time and offer advice, come over and offer support. Foster parents use each other as respite. So, there are opportunities to support foster parents and the children if there's a crisis.
Okay. I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna allow for questions from the colleagues, because I wanna be mindful of their time, and then I'll come back for a second round. Councilmember Williams, followed by Councilmember Stevens.
Hello. How many children are currently housed at the Children's Center?
As of eight AM this morning, seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
It, it has fluctuated between fifty-eight and seventy-four this week.
Okay. Do you know the average length of stay for those who are at the Children's Center or a temporary placement facility?
Yes, so, the average length of stay for this last quarter for children at the Children's Center was eighteen days. Many, many children are there just for a few days. For the youth reception centers, the average length of stay for the last quarter was thirty-eight days.
Okay. Do you have an age breakdown of the children at the Children's Center or a temporary placement facility?
Yes. So, for the Children's Center, twenty percent of the children there are newborns, three years old. Sixteen percent are four to six, thirty-five percent are seven to ten. Many of these children are the children in sibling groups that I was describing. Two percent, eleven to thirteen, eleven percent, fourteen to eighteen, and fourteen percent, nineteen-plus. For the youth reception centers, twenty-nine percent are newborns, three years, three-year-olds. That they are all in the sheltering arms facility for little ones. Four to six, eight percent, seven to ten, seven percent, eleven to thirteen, five percent, fourteen to eighteen, forty-eight percent, and nineteen-plus, three percent.
Thank you. I just have some more questions. So, in light of the twenty-nineteen Family Court decision, a matter of Kenneth R., what has ACS done to address the failures of the Children's Center? Are there any measures you'd like to share in terms of how you've implemented certain measures at other temporary placement facilities to comply with the Family Court ruling?
Yeah, so, this is an enormous priority for me. I've been at the Children's Center on a very frequent basis since I became commissioner in January. The Children's Center has added additional spaces for, for children. We have a really, really wonderful dedicated staff, twenty-four-seven. I've been there in the middle of the night, I've been there early in the morning. And they are working really, really hard to provide a really therapeutic approach. We partner with Gotham for nursing and with Bellevue for mental and behavioral health. We have the Youth Advocacy Program on-site. Children are doing homework after school, they're in, in women's groups, they're in men's groups. They are able to recreate, they watch movies, they have games. They are in, they do some group sessions together. I've been fortunate to take part in that. They, they read with one another. For the children who are in the nursery, they're getting excellent care. There's nurses on-site, staff dedicated. And so, we have really, and we, every single, bi-weekly, I have a placement action plan meeting. We're looking at the children with the most extraordinary needs. Sometimes, it's really complex for children with developmental disabilities. We need to get court orders for guardianship. We need to make sure they can access services for, through the Office of People with Developmental Disabilities or the State Office of Mental Health. We have a dedicated DD unit that really works to make sure we access a full array of services so the children are not lingering at the Children's Center. The Children's Center also shifted leadership and are my, it's under my first deputy commissioner, because it is a huge priority for us. The ACS police and peace officers have great relationships with the young people. And they provide for a safe environment on entry and exit to the Children's Center. So, there's been a lot of work to make it a safer place. And obviously, the, the key solution is that children aren't there too long. And so, we appreciate your attention on that. Because everything we're doing to build capacity, to build the right capacity with our foster care agencies, is so that children don't have to be in all the kin work. They don't have to be at the Children's Center or a youth reception center for any extended period.
What was the other name, the youth?
The youth reception centers, these are the other pre-placement facilities.
There's one in the city, like on the east side?
There's four of them. And so, the, the Children's Center might be-
The type of facility is, is, I think it's like teenagers, but it's on the east side in the fifties, sixties. Isn't there a facility there?
Yeah, I don't think that that is a, a youth reception center. That might be a group home or some other kind of facility.
I don't think it's a group home. But it's, I don't know if it's a drop-in, I'm not sure, but there's-
It might not be ACS. We'll find out.
No, it's ACS, it's ACS.
It, one of our, we'll, we'll, we'll find out exactly what they're-
Yeah, I would like to know what type of facility that is, because I've heard a lot of stories about that facility.
You're saying it's in the fifties?
Maybe I'll figure it out before the hearing is over, so I'll send some text messages now. Thank you, Chair. If you have more questions, I'll come back.
We'd be happy to.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we can meet with you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Hi, I don't have too many questions. But my first question just is around some of the issues I've heard, where some families might want to take on whole families or some, some siblings. How does ACS assist with, or do ACS assist with helping families find bigger housing so that they can keep families together and, and take all the siblings? I've had a few situations where this has been an issue.
Yeah, it's a challenge. I mean, thankfully, Councilmember, we are placing ninety-six percent of siblings together. So, it's a, a huge priority to make sure that they can. We can, we can support that, that work. We have staff who can help foster parents identify what they're eligible for, for, for vouchers. It's not easy work, it's not something that, you know, typically can move overnight. We'll work, if they're in a NITIA facility, we'll work with NITIA to try to access larger housing so all the siblings can stay together. But I, I don't want to pretend that that's something that we can easily do overnight. But it, we absolutely work with all of the ways in which they're eligible to try to make sure that they can secure housing that's appropriate for, for the children.
And so, I know you said you work with NITIA, but are there other agencies that you kinda work with to kinda help assist the families and stuff like that?
We have a housing unit, one for youth and then one for families. And we're doing a lot of work right now with, with NITIA to identify, across our continuum, families who could live closer to their children's school, who need more capacity. So, we work, we work with HPD, we work with our partners at, at DSS, we work with NITIA. So, the, the entire, obviously, the Chief Housing Officer and her team. We're in, in full partnership with the whole continuum of city agencies.
Thank you. And I just have a question around intro four thirty-six. How do you currently collect feedback from young people, families, and advocates about the Juvenile Justice Centers?
Yeah, thank you so much, Councilmember, for your focus here. As you said in your opening statement, I share the value that the folks who are closest to the experience, who have lived experience and closest to the work are who we should be listening to. And I make it a real priority. In each of our juvenile justice programs, whether that's a close-to-home program, whether it's our preventive continuum, what we call community-based alternatives, and our, and our secure detention and non-detention centers, they all have youth committees, so youth leadership groups. And they're listening, they're talking about everything from, you know, the quality of the food to the conditions, to the programming that they'd like. And so, those are all set up. We also, you know, upon my entry into this position, I really wanted to learn more about the Juvenile Justice Continuum. And so, I reached out to advocates and experts in, who are in behavioral health. And the first thing they said to me was, the deputy commissioner that you need to get is Nancy Ginsburg. And so, she's got thirty years at legal aid, so she's an advocate. And she joined us a few months ago, is actually at Crossroads right now, which is why she's not here. She's in the process of setting up a Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. We'd love to work with you on that. So that we formalize the process of having advocates, having young people, having parents, all at the table, our city partners. The other constituency I wanna make sure I call out is our staff. I've been holding town hall hearings in our secured detention facilities. These staff work through Covid. There was no virtual. They did such an extraordinary job, they were on twelve-hour shifts, they're now on eight-hour shifts. I'm just so grateful to our staff who come every day to take care of young people in our secured detention. And so, it's an important constituency to be in, on, at the table for this Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. So, I've already talked to Anthony Wells at three-seventy-one about that. And so, I know he'll be testifying later. But I, I just wanna say, on behalf of all of us at ACS, thank you to our staff.
No, I, I think it's always important because they are a huge part of this, right? And I think sometimes folks do forget that the staff and the work that they do. So, it's not, it's not an easy job, but they do show up every day and, and they continue to do the work. So, I, you know, support and second, what you're saying around just supporting staff. And, and thank you, those are all the questions that I have for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I have a question on that bill too. In your testimony, you said that you're already doing that? Are you doing a version of what the bill is trying to compel you to do? Because you said something-
Yes. Yeah, I mean, in, in short answer, yes. I mean, this is an absolute priority. We are looking at the data every day. We're looking at individual children and making sure that they have the appropriate placement options. The, you know, we're happy to continue the conversation, obviously, about the bill. But what we are doing is making sure that we're trying to drive down lengths of stay at the Children's Center and the YRCs.
Oh, no, sorry.
Talking about two different bills.
This was, this was on Councilmember Stevens' bill.
Oh, sorry.
Am I a co-sponsor of that bill?
I could say yes to that one too.
Yeah, okay. So, the bill that I'm also a co-sponsor of, yeah. Oh, I'm the second? Oh, yeah, so I'm the second on the bill. And I'm referencing her bill around the youth advisory board. So, the question is, in your testimony, you say that you are currently setting up a juvenile justice advisory board to lend expertise to us as we seek to continuously strengthen our efforts. And so, are you essentially saying that you are doing what the bill is asking you to do?
Excuse me for getting the bill wrong. Yes, we are. That's also yes.
Okay, no problem. And I know Councilmember Stevens talks about this a lot. And I agree with her when we talk about codifying things into law. Because, you know, we might have wonderful commissioners like you that decide to do amazing things. But then, when another administration comes on, they might dismantle what you do. So, I think we do hope that you'll support us and maybe work with us to shape it to kind of fit what you're already doing. But at the very least, that it's codified into law so that it exists in perpetuity.
Thank you. We look forward to those discussions.
Thank you. Are, are young people in, in care offered a Bill of Rights? That was a, actually a suggestion that came up at the Foster Youth Shadow Day. Some of the young people, you know, felt that they, they could, they would be a little bit more self-sufficient and able to kind of help themselves through the process. If they actually had a clear understanding of like what their rights were and, you know, what they should do if those rights, right, were not being met. Is there a Bill of Rights?
I don't know of an exact Bill of Rights, but I, I will say this. Every youth in foster care has an attorney and, who absolutely pushes for all of their rights. I want young people to know that they can reach out to the Office of Advocacy, they can reach out to, to my office. They have staff that are dedicated to them at the agencies. The case planner is obviously there. They have, and now, the coaches that'll be, that agencies are hiring up for. We want young people's voice, both in the individual and the collective. We have a youth leadership council that is, helps us shape policy and helps us think through. I think, I believe there have been many, many iterations of rights that are posted in some of our residential care facilities. But what is most important is that young people have the capacity and the wherewithal and the opportunity to express what they want, what they're individual. And we are creating all of the opportunities that we can possibly think of. The young people, you know, I had youth roundtables when I was at a foster care agency, and now, we have a youth leadership council. They tell us directly, you know, what they need, what's happening, what's not. And it's such valuable information. Things aren't perfect. But they are such extraordinary partners. We're using, in the Fair Futures Model, something called motivational interviewing, which just starts with the idea that young people wanna do well. I think we've tried to tell them what to do for too long. We believe young people want to do well, and they have some- We believe young people want to do well, and they have something that they want to do. Usually in the top three things, it's a job or money in their pocket in some way, and so we're working to increase those opportunities as well. But back to your original question, we'd be happy to think about sort of, we'll take a look at sort of updating anything that's there. And we really want to make sure kids know their rights. Do you want to add anything to that?
No.
Oh, CS. So the state has a youth bill of rights that we do post, but we're happy to continue to think that through.
I mean, the kids that, that are coming through the Foster Youth Shadow Day are like amazing.
Amazing.
Amazing advocates for how things should run at ACS and in government in general. I mean, they're just full of ideas and, you know, I, I'd love to take them up on many of them. I actually wrote up a whole bunch of, I have a whole report on things and ideas that I got from, you know, having conversations with them. They were really just awesome.
I would love to see it.
Young people, and it's, 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 you know, it brings a lot of joy to my heart to, to know that. They're part of the change that they're looking for and, and that they're, you know, allowed to have a voice in the process.
Amen.
Could you share what type of mental health services are provided to the staff at ACS who work with the foster care cases and what type of workforce development is provided?
Sure. So we have an extensive EAP program. We also contract with, for staff who've experienced some kind of vicarious trauma. You know, staff are exposed to a lot. We have a contract with folks who can deploy, and so they'll run trauma-based groups. We had an incident last week in which this was necessary. And that's been really helpful. So we hold healing circles that are agency-wide every week where folks can access, but also through the full city benefits and our EAP program, they can access individualized treatment as well. On the workforce side, we have a, an extensive workforce institute. We have our James Satterwhite Academy, which is focused primarily on child protective specialists, but the workforce institute has been built out over the last several years in partnership with CUNY. And so it has an extensive array of both virtual and in-person trainings for our entire system. Everything from engagement to safety and risk training. There's an onboarding protocol. Really investing in staff as they're coming on, not waiting and to sort of train them. For child protective specialists, it's essentially almost a nine-month to twelve-month process between starting in the academy. Then they go to on-the-job, then they go back to the academy, then they're in a training unit with a lower caseload. And we're really making sure, I mean, we used to just give folks caseloads and say, you know, after a couple of weeks of training. So it's really, really been thought through. We're thrilled that we have a hundred and twenty-three candidates going through the training process right now from our most recent class for child protective specialists, but the workforce institute, and we'd be happy to talk more and show you some of the modules, has been a real advance in our work.
Yeah, it's really heavy-duty work and,
Huge.
you know, the, I couldn't, I couldn't even imagine the type of cases that, you know, they're seeing and, you know, the issues that they're trying to address on a daily basis. So I, I could only imagine, right, that the burnout rate would be that much higher if these resources were not provided voluntarily, right? They were not, we're being proactive in our efforts to ensure that, you know, caseworkers and foster parents, right? Because we know that, yeah, the, the stakes are really too high if we're not, you know, crossing every T and dotting every I when it comes to the care of our children. And so it concerns me, right, when, you know, I just want to make sure that not only are the foster parents equipped, right, and supported throughout this process. It's a very difficult process. These are children that are not going home soon. And, you know, oftentimes, and come with a complex, you know, set of needs. And sometimes cultural norms, right, kind of make it complicated to be able to address those needs in the way that they should be. But I also think it is equally as important to ensure that the person who has oversight of those, you know, homes is prepared through workforce, you know, development opportunities, but also feels, feel supported on a social-emotional level because it is very, you know, daunting, and I've worked, you know, in social services my entire career and, and it's, you know, there's no way to kind of disconnect completely. You're taking some of that home. And so we want to make sure that, you know, everyone is, is considered in the equation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Deputy Speaker. The, a few, a few thoughts. Our twenty-six foster agencies have built response systems for their, for their staff as well. I've been spending as much as time as possible out with staff, so I think I've met four thousand or so ACS staff and, and many other provider agency staff. So I'll go and, you know, be in a Harlem office or a Queens office for a day and do some shadowing. These are extraordinary people, doing really, really important work, trying to get it right for families. You know, they, they are working to try to make sure that children are safe, that they can be safe at home whenever that is possible. And obviously, we're seeing the fruits of all of that, and I'm so grateful to them. But to sit and hear some of their anecdotes, they've asked us to, to really focus on simplifying their jobs a little bit and so they can spend more time with children and families. So we're going through a whole process where we are looking at the ways we're calling them to document and so that they're crossing, that, dotting the right I's and crossing the right Ts and not sort of overwhelmed with paperwork. And we are, we just had something, we have ChildStat every week, and we just had something that we that was dubbed reverse ChildStat. And essentially, it was the borough offices getting to ask ACS leadership, where are you on this issue, on this issue, and that issue? And it was hard for us. And, but it was really important, both symbolically and substantively, to say, we're, the, you know, the org chart's flipped. We're here to support you so you can support families.
Yeah. No, you, you have to go through the process in order to really actually feel it, right? Because we, we're tasked with creating policies and, you know, rules and, you know, programming around, you know, structures around families and issues that are very complicated, and, but it, there's a disconnect when one doesn't really truly kind of get it. So I like to, I, I actually like, I'm very, you know, hands-on, and I like to be out on the street, and I, I visit places and I sit there and I, you know, hang out, and it's becoming a little bit more difficult, not to get recognized, but, you know, whenever I can get away with it, I try because I want to see, right, like, how are you treating folks when I'm not here, right? When you don't know that I'm watching, because, you know, but, so, you know, I, I, one of the things that, to me, is, is really astounding is the, 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 the number, the decrease in the number of children that are in, in placement. I think that that is a testament to something good happening. What do you attribute that to?
You know, I, I've got to give credit to across the system, obviously preventive services and the options that child protective specialists have. There's such an array of therapeutic supports now. We're doing a lot of work to make the preventive services even more nimble to support tangible needs of parents, to be really responsive to what the families need in that moment, in addition to doing more of the casework counseling and the therapeutic work. You know, I think it's, it wouldn't be fair not to give some credit to the institutional legal providers. They represent parents. They do an excellent job in, in defending parents' rights. We met with them last evening. I think when parents know that they're someone that's an advocate for them, that actually helps them be more stable through a process which is difficult. And we have to do a thorough investigation, and we're very conscious that that is not an easy process for a family to go through. We are working really hard to make it as, as thorough and as respectful as it possibly can be, and so, but I do think that's an important part of the equation. I think our preventive services, the fact that the state has had an open-ended reimbursement stream so that when the city invests in good preventive services, then we see, you know, a, a really, really important state support. We have to continue to evolve preventive services to meet the, the challenges of today, and we're really excited about doing that.
Yeah. How do you, how do you incorporate like cultural norms into the, into the conversation, right? I, you know, I, I grew up in a house, in a Latino household, and, you know, corporal punishment was not, you know, uncommon. Like, we didn't, we, we were not abused children, but we were out of line, you know? It, it could happen at any given moment, and, and, you know, not that I'm, I, I don't excuse it and, and I don't condone corporal punishment, but it happens. And I think a lot of the reasons, you know, for why it happens is really stress-induced, you know, environments, right? Not, you know, I'm being able, not making enough, you know, to pay the bills and, you know, take the kids to McDonald's, not being, you know, not making rent. You may be having difficulty in a relationship. Just, you know, the instability that comes with living in, you know, in, in a, a life of poverty. You know, we've, we've all been there. I've been there as a parent. I've been challenged, and I have, you know, it, it took me a long time, and I, I, I share the story of my oldest son a lot because I think it's important, because he was like, I was sixteen years old when I had him. I didn't have any, obviously, any, any formal training on taking care of, of children, but he was a very difficult child because he had attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. He was like, oh, he was all over the place. And I was going through my own stuff, right? I was a teenager. His father had passed away when I was pregnant, and I was going through the motions of postpartum, and, and this kid is crazy, and I'm like, oh, my God, like, what am I going to do with him? And I eventually, you know, I'm not going to share the whole story because it's pretty tragic, but at some point, I reached out and got, you know, I was seeking mental health services for him, because I was like, he needs a therapist. He needs something. He was three. He was three. Mind you, and I, and this was at the recommendation of like every person that I ran into in my life, because they're like, this kid is like high maintenance. You really need to maybe get him, you know, evaluated and medicated. And so I remember when I first went, the first visit, they sat him down with his little crayons, and then the conversation was really centered on me. And I'm like, well, why am I in therapy? I didn't do anything. It was him. You need to talk to him, like, and he's the problem. Like, he's the one that has the, right, it's not me. But it, you know, it was really life-changing for me because through that process, I learned coping mechanisms that had never been taught to me, that I had never seen before, that I didn't understand, that allowed me to better deal with him, and I, and that was the gist of it, right? It was like, how do you deal with a child that has, you know, emotional, or, you know, whatever, health issues, and is difficult to, you know, to, to deal with, and even disciplining him. I mean, it was horrible. Like, I would have to restrain him, and so it, it was a process, but I, I say that to say that it was so, it saved my life, and it probably saved his, too. And unfortunately, not too many of our parents have, you know, access to that service, and even then, I had, I, I went through drastic means to be able to get my first appointment, and, and that hasn't changed. And this was, I mean, my son is thirty-two years old now. He was three years old, and it hasn't changed. Getting an appointment is, you know, nearly impossible. Getting social workers into our schools that are sensitive to cultural norms and don't necessarily see a reaction as a, you know, as an action of malicious intent, right, or parents wanting to hurt their child, but rather that a situation probably got out of control because all of these other things, right, are like in the universe of that family. That, that's, that's very difficult, you know, and so I hope that ACS is at least also, you know, in conversations with the administration, advocating for more mental health services for, for families. I think, you know, that is a really important component of the work that you do, and it, it, it's invaluable.
Yeah. I, I, taking down the stress of New York City's families is, I think, one of the most important priorities that, that we have, and I hope you've seen some of the good news around childcare and the, the waitlist and getting, we're opening up to all families across the city that are under three-hundred percent of the poverty line. Our family enrichment centers were our places to access, support and community. Making sure people aren't socially isolated and that they have the support that they need. I think we need to do a better job of helping people understand our preventive services. We have family therapies embedded in our preventive services, and they're, they're evidence-based. They're excellent. And people can access those services through our range of about fifty providers, community-based organizations, without an investigation. You know, it doesn't take ACS to be involved from an investigative place to, to get that support. And we really want to make sure we're, we're working with our providers to think about how do we become, how do we get that message out at the community level? And it's a, it's a huge priority for me. As, as far as culture specifically, what's so important, so we're asking our, our child protective specialists to do this work in a way that is non-judgmental but decisive. Right? They have to assess, make hard decisions. You know, we ask them to make prognoses that doctors might not be able to make, so what we try to do is make a team environment. We have, make sure that we're hiring a diverse staff who understands culture. But a lot of it comes down to how do you talk to a child? To understand a child's experience sort of with, you know, an incident, you know, were they scared? Were their parents out of control? Are they scared now versus something that we might want to mitigate and curb, but is just a, a cultural practice that doesn't really put a child at risk? Teasing that out, I think, has so much to do with getting good consultation from our clinical consultation team that's onsite in child protection. Talking to, to neighbors, talking to other people in the children's life, talking to the school. We have to just listen, and even when we listen perfectly, you know, it can be a complex story, but I think the more we are coming in with non-judgment, doing a thorough assessment, but not jumping to a judgment of parents, we get the reality of what's going on and really hearing from children what they need. If they're non-verbal, you know, it's important for us to, you know, if they're in childcare, whoever else is in their life that can give us a sense of whether in danger or not.
Yeah. No, I, I'll tell you that even for us, as members of this body, we advocate very heavily for mental health and, you know, social work services at, at the school setting. But I wouldn't, I would be lying if I didn't say that there's always like this little trickle of fear in me because I always, I, I'm the uncertainty of what that interaction is going to look like and how a situation can be deemed, right? Something that it's not. It scares the bejesus out of me. And so, you know, I just, I feel like, you know, I, I also, you know, I, I love to share these, these stories because I think that they're helpful, and I, and I hope that if there are parents that are, that are watching, and I, I'm always surprised that people run into me in the street, and they're like, oh, I saw you on TV on that channel, and I'm like, oh, people do watch it. But I hope that there, there, there are parents out there that, you know, that they understand, because I think we've had this conversation, right, about normalizing behaviors and, 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 and things that, you know, experiences that we have and, you know, and that we all share. We all share, because I think when we've talked to each other and we're listening to each other, we realize like, hey, I want, like, last week, I wanted to kill this kid, like, he was, he got, you know? And I didn't, but I wanted to, you know, and that doesn't make me a bad parent. It makes me a human being with feelings, right? And I think we need to normalize these conversations in a way that allows people to be really honest about how they're feeling and how, and what's happening in their households. Because we've, we've instituted a, 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 a community of like, we just, is, is a, is a sentiment of fear rather than, you know, a, a desire or an interest, right, to really approach a situation from, from a lens of, I need help. Right? I need to better understand this kid. This kid needs to better understand me, right? These things are making it very difficult for me to be able to be the best parent, but it doesn't mean that I'm a bad parent, right? And, and I think we've been, we've been conditioned in a way that we are not free to express that. Specifically, we are not free to express that as mothers. We cannot say that we love our children, but sometimes we don't like them. We don't, you know, and that is true. I love my children, but they get on my nerves. They get on my damn nerves, right? And that's okay. That's normal.
That's right.
That happens, right? So it's what I do with that. But I think we need to normalize these conversations so that people, parenting people feel more comfortable being honest about where they are and really finding communities amongst each other so that then they can start building the support network that'll help, you know, ensure that their families are stronger and healthier.
And I, and I thank you for that. I think that is exactly right, and parenting is, is hard, and I think parenting under the stress of poverty is doubly hard, and so, or triply. I think the, a few things on this that are really important, we are. We are really trying to, um, make sure that we only are in, uh, having investigations. You know, obviously, it comes through the state, it's not us, when that's the appropriate intervention. And so our deputy commissioner, Andrew White, who's here, has been leading us, and I want to publicly thank the chancellor for his openness to this. We are in the process of retraining the liaisons around the SCR in all eighteen hundred schools. And making sure they understand how to access support without an investigation. Um, and when an investigation is, is the appropriate, um, point here. I also think, you know, there's, most of this stuff should happen outside of ACS. You and I have talked about that, right? It's not. Um, but where we can contribute to community investments, the family enrichment centers, that's where those conversations are happening, right? They're set around a kitchen table, people are enjoying a meal together, they're celebrating a cultural event, um, and they are providing support. You know, we talk about substance abuse, mental illness, domestic violence, that's sort of the, the big three in child welfare. They're all trumped by social isolation. When someone's alone and stressed out, that is, that is something we want to overcome. And we don't overcome that through investigation. We overcome that through community support.
Absolutely. Um, and so we have a, we have a part of the, of our hearings where we allow individuals, uh, to, who have reached out to give us questions that they think, you know, that we should be part of, of,
Great.
of the hearing process. So I'm gonna ask a couple, they're gonna be, if you can be as, as brief as possible, because we have a hearing at one and I wanna have, we have time, uh, we wanna have time to ensure that anyone that has questions can ask them. Um, or people that wanna testify can testify. Um, but does ACS keep track of how often relatives are denied as foster parents?
Um, I don't have those numbers with me. We can certainly take a look at that. If a relative is, um, denied as a foster parent, um, there are some where it's mandatory, right? And so we don't have discretion. Um, if it's in a place where they don't have discretion, they can reach out for a supervisory review, um, to take a second look at whether that is, um, an appropriate, um, decision that has been made in that case.
Okay. Um, does ACS determine if the relatives are, are, if if relatives are, uh, deterred from even applying?
That would be hard to know. Um, what I would offer is I would encourage anybody to reach out to our office of advocacy, which you can get on our website. Um, we might be able to announce the number here as well. Um, if they feel like they are being deterred, if they, you know, we get a lot of inquiries from, uh, families through the office of advocacy and we do not, you know, our goal is to have every child who possibly can be with family. And so, um, we do not want to be deterring anybody. And I'd wanna know about it personally if we are. So I'd encourage, Stephanie, would you give the number?
Sure. The office of advocacy is two one two six seven six nine four two one.
Thank you so much for that. Um, I don't know if I, if, if this, if council member Williams asked this, I might have tuned out a minute, but, um, do we know how many children currently have, how many children currently have been at the children's center for more than thirty days? You didn't?
No. I believe it's forty.
Forty?
In that range, uh, council member. We can get you the exact number.
And how does, how does ACS monitor how long children remain at the children's center?
Uh, we get a report every three hours or so from the children's center. Uh, that is by length of stay, um, and that's the report we're using to really identify, are there any places where children need some extraordinary measures for, our level of leadership to intervene, to make sure the office of placement administration is doing everything they can to place, that we're having conversations with providers, so very, very frequently.
Okay. So what is ACS currently doing to ensure that children don't remain at the children's center for longer than a few hours or a day, as intended?
So this speaks to the, you know, that, the, the conversations we've been having about the kin work, the support that we're providing to our provider partners, uh, in their recruitment efforts. Um, and, um, constantly making sure that, um, we are, so we have a, a placement module. So when a child's entering care, it goes in, all of the providers where we see potential placements or the module sees, they get a referral, they review it immediately, and they're letting us know if they have a home. So this is happening all day, every day. When that's not working and we get stuck, we sort of bump it up to a managerial, uh, level review and saying, all right, we're gonna reach out to the providers and really understand if we were able to, if there's foster parents willing, what supports might they need, right? If this child has a particular need that a lot of foster parents are saying, I can't do that, there's a behavioral challenge. Um, what if we put an additional coach? What if we provided resources in some way? Or if the foster parent is saying, I can't get the child to school there, can we work with DOE to get a bus line set up right away, to make sure that the children can stay in their school? So that, that sort of social work is happening.
What is the average age of a child that goes to one of these facilities?
The average age? I don't know, but I, we, we spoke earlier to the children currently there, so I'll just repeat it really quickly. The newborn to three years old, twenty percent, four to six is sixteen, seven to ten is thirty-five percent. So it's younger than you might think. Most of those young ones are in sibling groups, which is, uh, the reason it's a little more challenging. Eleven to thirteen is two percent, fourteen to eighteen, eleven percent, and nineteen plus, fourteen percent.
So, so would you say, or maybe you can get back to us, that of the, the forty plus, you know, the children, um, that were in placement, um, for over the thirty day period, are they there because of behavioral issues? Are they there because they're, uh, they have a physical condition that requires a specific level of care?
It's a combination, it, not typically behavioral. There's, I think, our providers work with kids on a range of behavioral issues. We are really grateful for them. Every once in a while, our child might, some children wanna come back to the children's center because they like it there. Um, and so the, but most of it is either very large sibling groups that we're trying to keep together and identify a home. And we might know of a home and it's gonna be ready in a couple of weeks. Um, and then, and complex, either special medical or developmentally delayed children.
And the facilities are equipped, I would like to come and visit one, by the way, because the, the facilities are equipped to, to deal with that?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've got staff, we've got nursing staff, we bring in additional nursing staff in complex needs. Um, we have behavioral health staff, we've got recreation folks. Um, you are more than welcome to join us at the children's center anytime.
Yeah, well, I would like that. I haven't been to one yet. Um, and has ACS measured the success of the new initiatives, such as the family finder pilot or increase in therapeutic foster homes on length of stay at the children's center?
So this is this new model that we're creating where we're essentially combining, we're raising the rates across the board, um, and combining the family foster care and the, um, the therapeutic foster care into what's called enhanced foster care. What that means is before, agencies, some had a therapeutic program, some didn't. Um, some had really big ones, some had small ones. Now every agency will have a full continuum of support. And the programs used to be distinct. You were either the therapeutic foster parent or you were a, a, um, a regular foster parent. And so what we are now doing is combining it so that if a child has a need or there's an additional training or support that a foster parent has, they can move those resources throughout their continuum. And so, um, therapeutic had about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent, capacity of our system. With EFFC, it's more like twenty-five percent that can, can bring sort of additional, uh, supports, beyond the case planner and coach that we were talking about earlier, these, the sociotherapist kind of role. Um, so that is, we are in the process of transitioning, um, we're re-procuring the system right now. But OMB and the mayor's office, uh, supported us in putting the resources into the existing contracts, so that we can begin this process right away. That began July first, um, so we're in the ramp up period of that right now.
Okay. Um, I have three more questions, then it could be yes or no. But, uh, would the DYFJ agree that the advisory board should have the ability to visit detention and placement facilities without advance notice and to speak with incarcerated youth and staff?
I don't know about the advance notice part. I just think the safety of those facilities and the predictability is really important. Absolutely. Folks should be allowed to be there, to talk to young people, um, at the young person's discretion and the lawyer's discretion too. Obviously, we wanna make sure. It's important that the young people want to know who's there, et cetera. Um, so I think, we'd wanna be careful about the no advance notice piece, but I think these are, these are public institutions and people should have a right to, to be able to be there.
And would DYFJ agree that the advisory board should have access to DYFJ documents relating to violence in detention and placement facility staffing and programming?
My only concern is confidentiality. I think we should have that conversation.
Okay. And final question, would DYFJ agree that individuals who have been formerly incarcerated in the F, uh, DYFJ must have a place on the board?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not supposed to be negotiating this out, but, but, uh, if we didn't have young people who were, had been there and experienced, then I don't know what the, why the board wouldn't, it wouldn't be a successful board.
And we know you have the best advocates in the world, so thank you so much. And, uh, and does anybody have any final questions? Council member Williams, no?
Yeah, um, as you all know, I have like my own little personal senior advisors here. And I just like, I don't even know how to conceptualize all of these things into questions. Um, my mom was a CPS worker for many years and then a court liaison, total with the agency for thirty-six years. And so I just like, put her and all of her friends in a group chat. And I'm like, I don't even know where to start.
Uh-oh.
So I feel like maybe I'll just, um,
Me?
send you a letter, official letter for these questions. But the facility that I was talking about was on First Avenue and Twenty-Eighth Street, and they said it was a children's center.
That's the children's center, yeah.
Okay. Um, yes, I've heard many stories. Um, my mom actually, some of the final years before she retired, did additional hours at that facility. And so I would hear her complain all the time about the conditions, the safety, the cleanliness. Um, she mentioned some stuff around trafficking and a whole bunch of other things. This predates your, um, commissioner role, but I just, kind of just like a follow-up in terms of, what you have put in place to ensure that a lot of these issues that have been long sustaining issues, um, are being addressed. So cleanliness, sleeping conditions, food, showers, uh, children that don't wanna take their medication, um, getting them to actually go to school is some of the things that they flagged amongst others.
Yeah.
So have you?
So over the last two years, and this predates me, the, some of the, the great work to improve the conditions at the children's center. Um, the children's center's been under the leadership of our first deputy commissioner. Uh, and she has brought, she's there very frequently, I'm there very frequently. She's brought the entire agency to bear, our administrative folks, to make sure we've replaced all of the furniture. We've replaced, made it much more child-friendly. We've repainted, we're constantly repainting. Um, make sure that there's, um, toys and there's books for children, that there's programming there. Built out new spaces that are, um, friendly by age. So there's, there's teen rooms, there's different, there's a faith room. Um, you know, the, so we are constantly focused on, you know, we mentioned earlier, we have seventeen hundred children who come through there every year. Um, and so we're trying to meet all of their needs. There's a teamwork, so there's always an administrator on duty, who's working with all of the staff, with ACS police who secure the perimeter part of it. Um, so, and obviously, our partners at Bellevue are really, really vital to that. Um, so I think we have made extraordinary measures, but it's a constant, uh, source of attention, um, to make sure it is safe and it has all of the right, you know, I, I'll be there and make sure if there's a, if there's a wall that's been, go ahead.
No, I'm just really laughing at the can of worms. I'm like, oh, my God, I don't even know where to start. But just, just, we're, we're done with that question?
Okay.
Answer. The other thing that she's saying, I'm just picking a few things, but I'm gonna send you a letter. Um, the other thing that she's, they're, they're mentioning is bed bound and wheelchair bound youth, that nursing staff should be using higher lifts to transfer the youth from their beds. Um, complaints around nursing staff refusing to do, um, tasks that are medically related, um, and placing responsibility on childcare staff. Are you aware of that?
So we, whenever there is a youth that comes in with special needs, like a, a youth who's bed bound, um, we are reaching out to Gotham to bring on additional nursing. Um, has there ever been a time when childcare staff had to lift a child? Yes. I mean, I'm, I think the,
Yeah, they're saying nursing staff coming to isolation rooms two to three hours after designated medication times to administer medicine. It just seems to be a lot of issues in reference to the nursing medical staff and the actual childcare providers, so.
So we have, we have ACS nursing staff, we have Gotham nursing staff. We are always fluctuating the levels depending on the needs of the children coming there. Um, I have to say, council member, I think part of this is COVID was so difficult. There were so many children who were, had to be in quarantine or isolation. Thankfully, that has come way, way down. And so it put an enormous amount of stress on the nursing staff, on the childcare staff who are extraordinary. Um, so I think these issues aren't as acute as you're hearing them right now. Um, but we'd be happy to continue that conversation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you a letter and we can continue the conversation because there's also some things around, um, CPS workers. And, um, I think the agency spends a lot of money on recruitment, but not as much attention on retention. Um, and so based off of some of the feedback I'm getting in my text messages, we'd love to talk to you about how we incentivize people to stay at the agency. Um, and what is the current salary of, uh, entry CPS worker?
Um, let me, let me get that for you. It, it goes up over time, obviously.
And there's something that we've been talking about as a council in terms of like pay equity in certain positions. Getting paid lesser wages, looking at the people that are in these roles are typically women, typically people of color.
Absolutely.
So just wanted to put that on record, that we properly pay, uh, these workers who really are on the front lines.
And, and if I may add, to really invest in, in leadership development and growth, it's really important to me that, uh, everyone at ACS has, you know, career pathway, um, and has all of the support that they need for that. So I'd be happy to meet or respond to, to your letter.
Okay. And I look forward to touring some of the facilities soon.
Great.
Thank you so much. I think this is a really, really good hearing and, um, a lot of information. Thank you so much for any, every, all of, everything that you do every single day and, uh, to your team. And we are here if, uh, if you need anything or we can, you know, be better partners in government.
Thank you for your support and, and all of you do to bring such important transparency to these issues.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now be calling on members of the public to testify. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will then meet you, and you may begin your testimony once a sergeant armed sets the clock and gives you the cue. I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record after seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony at council.nyc.gov. All testimony will be limited to three minutes. Remember that there is a few second delay when you are unmuted before we hear you. The first panel, uh, will be a virtual panel and will consist of Anthony Wells from DC thirty-seven.
First of all, where's my, where's my, where's my niece going when her uncle was getting ready to speak? That's council, that's councilwoman Williams.
No, I have to go to another hearing. You try and call me out.
I love you though, girl. I love you.
I love you too.
Good afternoon, good morning. Thank you, Chair President Ayala and committee members. My name is Anthony Wells and the president of the Social Service Employees Union Local Three Seventy-One, representing over twenty thousand social service employees. We are in every agency, NYCHA, Health and Hospitals, City Hall, the Bell President's Office, uh, DA's Office, represent nearly six thousand members in ACS, including CPS, CPS supervisors, childcare, community care specialists, youth development specialists and, uh, associate youth development specialists, community talents, caseworkers and support staff in the juvenile centers. Uh, I initially wanted to comment on the committee's proposals. In general, we're supportive of any efforts that promote and support the workers in carrying out their duties effectively and efficiently. Let me just say this, Commissioner Dan Hauser, uh, we have a great working relationship. Uh, we are addressing a lot of issues in child welfare. And it's pretty good to hear both the city council members and administration talking about the great work that these workers are doing, under sometimes some trying circumstances and always, always under difficult circumstances. Uh, I heard, uh, councilwoman, uh, Williams person, councilperson, Williams talking about salaries. Uh, we negotiate those salaries. Uh, we, we are addressing the issue of detention. We have a, we have, uh, negotiated, uh, a additional, 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 uh, bonus, as it were, for workers who stay for two years. We also have a mentorship program where we provide some mentorship for newer workers. Uh, and it's largely manned by workers who have less than ten years' experience to talk about what kind of issues need to be addressed. We're addressing those issues in the children's center. Okay, to try and make it, in my testimony, you will see, I questioned even the initial wisdom of putting a children's center between a men's shelter and Bellevue Hospital. The, the children's shelter was not meant to be a long-stay, uh, location, and we continue to work with this agency so that it's appropriate. But let me get to, to, to some of these, uh, proposals quickly. With respect to intro four thirty-six, the idea of a juvenile detention advisory board is a good idea. Conceptually, it likely be accomplished if this, if the stakeholders discuss and resolve issues around juvenile detention. The one glaring omission is, in the bill is that the workers are not there. Otherwise, we don't have any union representation on that, on that board. Okay? And I'm always telling my members, they are the experts. They're the ones doing the work every day, day in, day out. They have a voice and have something to say. So I would, I would recommend that you include a union representative on, on that board. Okay? Finally, let me turn to six forty-two. We welcome any review of an adjustment to the children's center. The wrong question is physical placement between an adult men's shelter and Bellevue Hospital. Nevertheless, our members have provided great care to the children under their charge, even in the most difficult and challenging circumstances. We would want the proposal to include a number of out-of-age children housed there, available and appropriate resources, and safety around the center. We look forward to working with the city council, city hall, ACS, and addressing these issues. Okay? And also you should note, uh, uh, Chair President, the city does not run any foster homes, nor do they have, do they run any group homes. Uh, they have privatized, so therefore, there's no safety net in both of these, uh, areas.
Thank you. And now we know who to call whenever councilmember Williams gives us a hard time. I stayed to hear your testimony. Goodbye.
Gee, she was a delegate. She's been working in child welfare, like you said, for thirty-six years. She had great service. And we're really particularly proud of, of, of councilperson Williams, um, because she does know the issues. Even though she says she did, she really does know. And she, uh, she's a great addition to your committee and to the city council.
She really is. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hold on, councilmember Russell?
I, I couldn't agree with that sentiment more. Uh, councilmember Williams is a tremendous colleague. Uh, we're very fortunate to have her in this body. Um, and, and we're fortunate to have, uh, your leadership at three seventy-one, Anthony. Um, what, what always inspires me about three seventy-one is that it is a mission-driven union. It's not just about fighting and defending for the members, it's the people that you all serve. And that comes through in your advocacy every day. Um, I, I'm strongly supportive of intro four thirty-six. I think that councilmember Stevens has sponsored, um, a very smart piece of legislation here. Uh, one amendment that I'd like to suggest is that three seventy-one, uh, have representation, the union have representation, the workforce have representation on that board as well, which I think would provide, um, you know, another perspective and, uh, a beneficial oversight and input. Um, and I hope that that's something that we can consider through this process. But thank you, as always, to you and your team for your thoughtful leadership. We appreciate your partnership very much in the council.
And may also say, uh, uh, Chairwoman, the councilperson, uh, Wessler is also a, a, a added addition to, uh, the city council. Of course, your leadership, Diane, you know, we've known you for years. So we are expecting to continue our work with the city council. You have some, uh, some good people, like I said, that I've known, I've known councilperson Wessler for many years. And, and he likes to resolve issues, and that's what this is about. Not just about workers, because the workers are there to help, to help the families. And together, we get this done. So we look forward to a working relationship with this city council. And, um, as you, as I noted, we're generally supportive of all these bills. We just had those comments, uh, where we think that, uh, that input can either make those bills stronger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be an in-person panel, and it will consist of Amy A Bush and Ellen Ampopo.
Good morning. Good morning, Deputy Speaker, Chairperson Ayala, and members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of JCCA and the youth, their families, and their foster parents who care for them. My name is Amy A Bush. I'm the Senior Vice President for Foster Care Prevention Community Partnerships at JCCA. For the past twenty-three years, I've been working in child welfare. I had the privilege of starting my career as a child protective worker. I've also served as a clinical consultant to CPS. I've been a preventive director and a vice president for foster care programs for about eight years. I have worked with hundreds of foster parents throughout my career and admire their dedication to our children. JCCA works with about seventeen thousand of New York State's children and families each year, providing foster care, residential care, preventive mental health and behavioral services, and educational assistance and remediation. To become a foster parent, an individual must undergo checks in the state central register for child abuse, New York State Division of Criminal Justice, and the Bureau of, Federal Bureau Investigation. These checks were put in place to keep children safe at admirable goal. However, we need more flexibility in how these checks are implemented. Many, many of our wonderful, loving and committed foster parents have lived experience as a subject in investigation. Why doesn't the Credible Message Movement apply to foster parents? Once a foster parent successfully completes the, the demanding process of having their child returned home, they have expertise. The person is an expert in pain and trauma of a parent experience when their child is removed. They are experts in the mandatory classes and under demands of the child welfare system. They're experts in how foster parents can support a child and a birth parent through this process, also through co-parenting. ACS has embraced parent advocates to help those involved in child welfare system. At JCCA, we have embraced the RISE model and peer advocates. Why are we not changing the system for parents, foster parents as well? The child welfare system has a disproportionate impact to families of color. We penalize potential foster parents who may have successfully had their children returned home many years prior and done everything right since then. Some did not realize that they had an indicated case, and some may have lost the opportunity to request a fair hearing or ask that their case be reviewed to have the indicated case removed from their record. In addition to this, we penalize foster parents who never had a child removed. A foster parent applicant may have been a victim in an indicated report and now needs to defend themselves. An applicant may have a house, a household member or even listed the home as their addresses and may be named in a case that they didn't know existed. JCCA recommends that there be more flexibility in the screening process for foster parents. When an applicant to, when an applicant to be a foster parent has a past SCR allegation on their record, that may be even twenty years old, organizations like JCCA are not always given the ability to make case-by-case decisions. Some allegations result in automatically ruled out and limit our ability to recruit and hire some of the most preferred applicants. JCCA and other child welfare agencies aim to set up families for success by having robust, robust cadre of foster parents in local communities to care for our children. We're building an infrastructure for success. We make countless demands for our foster parents. They must undergo sixty hours of training. They're responsible for ensuring children, including teens, make it to school, attend medical appointments, therapeutic appointments, casework, appointments and visits with family members that may be emotionally triggering. New York's, New York should pay foster parents a viable wage to provide for the children in their care. We view foster parents as care professionals and pay a wage with the undeniable value of their work, work that is incredibly complicated and difficult. We owe it to our communities to, at a minimum, support our foster parents with a viable wage. Thank you for taking the time to consider a more flexible screening process and eligibility requirements for our foster parents. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Ellen Ampopo, and I am the Director of Programs at New Yorkers for Children, a nonprofit dedicated to improving the well-being of children and families in the child welfare system, with a particular focus on those aging out of the foster care system. We are the only organization in the city with a connection with every single young person who has aged out of foster care, and I am here advocating for additional investments and services to support all those connected to child welfare. As the purpose of this hearing makes clear, there is often a dearth of support for children and young people at all stages in the foster care system, including in finding loving homes and aging out. We frequently hear from the youth we serve about how they have not felt supported while placed with a foster family, including not receiving their monthly stipends, having their foster parents unlawfully take out loans in their NIMs, being locked out of accessing food, and many more. In fact, our back-to-school package program, which distributes laptops to students in care, had a persistent problem with laptops being stolen by foster parents before we modified the distribution process to prevent this. From this knowledge and from our experience supporting adoptive and kin gap families through our post-permanency support program, we have seen what works in the field relating to creating healthy and long-lasting families. In the post-permanency support program, we emphasize a strengths-based mindset, trauma-informed thinking, and that the child welfare system should prioritize quality over quantity when it comes to placements. This is also reflected in the research surrounding foster families. For example, a report by Casey Family Programs recommends emphasizing kin gap placements, a match of values, and more supportive programs for families. Many of these programs are focused on addressing behavioral and mental health, as well as creating mentor and help groups for foster families. These programs not only increase the retention of foster parents, but also benefit the well-being of youth in foster care in the long run. In our broader work as well, we see the values of mutual respect, trauma-informed programming, and the value of wraparound services. We serve about a thousand youth, family and families per year, and since 2018, we have directly supported more than thirty-five hundred youth as they transition out of the child welfare system. Since our founding, we have distributed seventy million dollars in total support to these young people when they needed it the most. Youth who have aged out of the foster care system do not nearly receive the focus and services they deserve. As the only organization that provides services and continual assistance to this demographic, we welcome the opportunity to discuss with the council and administration our strategies, programs, and how we can collaborate to improve support for this vulnerable group. Thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony today. We hope that increased investments in our services and beyond could help to build a stronger child welfare landscape and a more equitable city for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you think that, that, uh, have you heard of the, the possibility of creating some sort of Bill of Rights for young people? Because that, that was like a continuous theme at the Foster Youth Shadow Day, is that young people themselves that were already in the system, um, felt that they needed something like that?
Yeah, our organization actually has a document that we give to all young people that we, we work with. Yes.
But it's not mandatory?
It is not mandatory, no.
Okay, all right. And in regards to JCCA, the, is, is the, uh, like, what is the, the opportunity to, to make suggestions, right, to the ACS, um, and to the state for that matter, uh, regarding, um, the assessment process and the possibility, uh, to include some of the recommendations that you mentioned today?
I have not had the opportunity to be part of any forums, but I'm happy to be part of those discussions because I think it's super important.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much for coming today and for staying.
Thank you. So our next panel will also be virtual and will consist of Kate Wood, Zachary Ahmed, and Neela Natarajan. Apologies if I say your name wrong.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Ayala and the committee for holding this very important hearing. My name is Kate Wood, and I work at the Special Litigation and Law Reform Unit at the Legal Aid Society Juvenile Rights Practice. I encourage the committee to read our full-written testimony, but right now I'd just like to spend a few minutes speaking about failures in the foster home certification process that result in denying children foster homes with their relatives or kin. So as the committee knows, every year ACS removes thousands of children from their parents or guardians, and Legal Aid represents the majority of those children in family court. Each of these children needs a home, yet countless children are denied state-available, loving foster homes with their kin. This is due in large part to ACS's refusal to certify these kin foster homes because of the relative's criminal history or their records on the state central registry. ACS testified today about situations where they can use their discretion to certify these homes, yet we see in our practice, time and again, their failure to do so. This often occurs even if this history is decades old and even if it has no bearing on the relative's current ability to care for the child. So as an example, uh, right now, a teenage client, sexual abuse survivor, she was denied a foster home with her grandmother. Uh, over the past thirty years, this grandmother has earned her master's degree in community health education. She's worked at a nonprofit that helps other New Yorkers with chronic illness. But before that, she was addicted to drugs, and she had been arrested on loitering and prostitution charges. As a result, ACS denied her application to be a foster mother to her granddaughter, and our client was punished for something her grandmother had done a lifetime ago. This is unjust, and it directly harms children. To try to combat this, Legal Aid, with our partner, that Second LLP, did file a class action lawsuit on behalf of these clients, and we encouraged the committee to read our complaint, as well as the New York Times article that details the harm this practice imposes on children and their families. And we urge city council to examine eligibility barriers as they pretend to pin of children in foster care, to really push ACS to provide meaningful evaluations of prospective kin foster parents, and to ensure that all children have the services and supports that they need. I'd just like to also talk briefly about intro six forty-two. This legislation is needed, so needed, as children do languish in the children's center and other temporary placement facilities for weeks and even months after ACS removes them from their parents or guardians. Several of our clients have spent as many as sixteen months in these facilities while waiting for placement. A former ACS Commissioner Gladys Pariot stated the children's center is designed as a place for children to stay for a couple of hours, not even days. It is certainly not the least restrictive, most home-like setting to which children are entitled. Yet, as we pointed out over three years ago at another city council hearing on the children's center, youth, particularly teenagers and those who probably need, languish there and suffer as a result. We even heard today from ACS that forty children at the children's center, half of the population at the children's center right now have been there for over a month. As children wait for in placements, they are deprived of a family home, and many aren't provided with proper case management services, adequate medical and mental health care, or educational services. These, this lack of services can lead to catastrophic results, including severe mental decompensation. City council has previously heard testimony from at least one family member who described how ACS left her autistic, cognitively delayed sibling languishing at the children's center for months without proper clothes that fit him, and required him to quarantine during COVID without bed sheets, pillows, or blankets. ACS does not currently report on how long children remain in these facilities. And in order to craft any kind of effective solution to these long stays, we have to understand the problem. This bill is a critical first step, and we urge the city council to pass it. Finally, with regards to intro four thirty-six, we commend the intent of the bill, but believe it can be strengthened in a number of ways. Um, first, mandating that, uh, formerly incarcerated youth is on the board, um, making sure that the board has the ability to visit detention facilities and speak with youth and staff and have access to records, um, is really critical to, for it to have its intended impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary?
Time starts now.
Uh, thank you. My name is Zach Ahmed. I'm the Senior Policy Counsel of the New York Civil Liberties Union. Uh, we defend the civil rights and civil liberties of New Yorkers. We defend the civil rights and civil liberties of New Yorkers across the state. I'd like to thank Chair Ayala and the General Welfare Committee for holding today's hearing and for the opportunity to testify. I will try to be brief. Today's hearing examines a component of we, what we and many advocates refer to as the family regulation system, the network of public agencies, reporting mandates, and surveillance systems that exist for the ostensible goal of protecting children, but that in reality often function to separate families and punish parents and children for poverty and systemic disadvantages that they face. The NYCLU works in coalition with impacted parents and family defenders on policy and public education efforts, and we have worked with community organizations and several members of the Council to educate parents about their rights when ACS comes knocking on their doors. Through our work with parents and advocates, we've heard countless stories from impacted parents and learned about the widespread torment and lasting trauma that over aggressive ACS enforcement has had on New York City families, and Black and Brown families in particular. This system, this systemic overreach is indirectly, is directly antithetical to the goal of supporting family well-being. As a committee with jurisdiction over ACS, one of the most important rules this committee can perform is to hold ACS accountable and pursue meaningful legislation to that end. The bills on today's agenda scratch the surface of this system, focused on data collection, following up on prior agency studies, and creating new advisory entities. There's certainly some value in collecting information and making space for greater stakeholder involvement. But any real change to how ACS operates or to the family regulation system will require that the Council fully exercise the authority it has to regulate the agency and mandate that it respect the rights of parents and families when conducting investigations and seeking removal of children from their homes. These bills fall short of that, of the kinds of reforms that parents and family advocates have been calling for for many years. Three years ago to this month, members of the Council's Progressive Caucus introduced a package of bills aimed at doing just that, including a pair of groundbreaking, start, excuse me, including a pair of groundbreaking bills to require ACS to notify parents of their rights at the point of first contact. Those bills, with a few critical amendments that we and other advocates have testified to previously, would have required ACS case workers to inform parents directly that they had the right to remain silent, not sign away their medical privacy rights, and consult with a lawyer before speaking with ACS, similar to the Miranda rights that are read to suspect, to suspects in police custody. Unfortunately, this critical legislation has not advanced. A bill from the prior Council, introduced by Councilmember Rivera to require oral notification of parents' rights, still has not been reintroduced in 2022, while a similar bill introduced by Councilmember Ung this year to require written disclosure forms remains laid over in committee. We appreciate the Council's efforts to use its oversight authority to examine the operations of ACS, ask important questions, and ensure that advocates and others have an accurate data and an opportunity to participate in the conversation. But meaningful reform requires more than that. The Council must finish what it has started, introduce and pass the family Miranda bills that, that it took up previously, and work directly with affected parents and advocates to pursue substantive change to the family regulation system. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Next is Neela.
Yes, good morning. My name is Neela Natarajan, and I'm a supervising attorney and policy counsel in the family defense practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. I thank the Committee on General Welfare and Committee Chair Ayala in particular for the opportunity to address the Council about the child welfare system, or what we often refer to as the family regulation system, and its impact on the families we serve. I had a lot I wanted to say today, but frankly, Councilmember Ayala, so many of your comments and stories and questions really got to the heart of what I wanted to share. So I'm just going to focus on a few points. Our office represents hundreds and thousands of parents in Brooklyn. As you named, Councilmember, the onset of an investigation, the threat or actuality of family separation, and the prolonged surveillance of a court proceeding can be traumatic for families, all starting with that report to ACS. Commissioner Dan Hauser named the benefit to parents and to families for, in having meaningful and supportive legal representation. Our team of attorneys and social workers are often the only people in a parent's life who are there to support them through that process. It is vital that parents know their rights at the onset of an ACS investigation, including having that access to counsel. We all believe that a better educated parent is a better parent, and knowing your family's rights allows a parent to make the best decisions for their children. Second, the overwhelming majority of parents we represent base allegations of child neglect that mistakes a lack of resources and poverty with maltreatment. Too often, a report to ACS is used to address issues caused by our own failure to help families meet their basic needs, like clean and safe housing, accessible and culturally competent mental health services, or quality special education services. Instead of relying on community-based resources that are frankly are often underfunded, such as food pantries or support groups, families are reported to ACS and then exposed to that trauma and fear. Recent research has shown that 44% of Black children in New York City, nearly half of Black children in our city, will experience an investigation in their youth. In 2019, over 216,000 New York children were subjected to a child welfare investigation. We recommend that this committee prioritize policies and programs that support families and keep children in their homes. Currently, we pour immense resources into these investigations, into surveillance and court proceedings, and the foster system, which frankly all work to punish parents and separate families. We recommend channeling these resources into supporting parents in their efforts to create safe and stable environments for their children. As you named, Councilmember, it is vital to keep children with their family if they have to be separated from their parents. And we have seen real issues with a delay in having family members or family friends cleared, as Ms. Woods named, with family members not being cleared for reasons not related to current safety issues. In addition to it can be cleared for placement in the foster system, it is also vital that families, our family members are cleared to be family visit resources. A visit at home, or in the park, or the library with a family or friend that is known to a child and to a parent is a far better environment for a family than an agency office. And so I would name that we've seen a parent's face, families face months and months of delay in these resources being cleared, and no visits occurring due to that delay. And finally, I want to address the committee's review of the Children's Center. We recommend that this committee require that ACS consider family reunification as a solution to the lengthy stay in the Children's Center. When a child is languishing in the Children's Center, we cannot solely focus on placing that child in the foster system. We must also, as required by law, make every effort to reunify that family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next panel is also virtual, and it will be, consists of Alexander Stein.
My name's Alexander Stein, and the reason why I'm here is I'm having troubles. My wife and her boyfriend, they recently had a baby last year, and they were both picked up for possession of a controlled substance. Now, Donterius had some prior convictions, so he's facing a long time in jail, but I'm having a lot of trouble getting little DeMarco from Child Protective Services. Now, you guys have a system that wants to put it in any foster care or foster facility, yet I'm actually the child's basically stepfather, and I can't get access to the kid. And the kid and I, I mean, DeMarco and I, we go to McDonald's every day. I just can't imagine, you know, what they're feeding him. I can't imagine the trauma that he's going through. And then the fact that my wife, you know, she's in jail, I'm having so much stress about that, getting in contact with her, the Child Protective Services is making it almost impossible. So I just want my little baby back. I just want to be able to get, you know, little DeMarco back on the hormone therapy, because that's the other issue, the medications that DeMarco is on. Now, those medications have not transferred to CPS. They do not have the proper, you know, hormone medicine that little DeMarco is on. So how am I supposed to get him his medicine? And when I reach out to people, I've reached out to AOC multiple times, of course, our Congresswoman, nobody helps me. I reach out to Eric Adams, nobody helps me. So I'm here at the Committee of General Welfare, trying to figure out, what are we going to do? Are we going to let foster, you know, parents control this narrative, or they're going to control the kids that they have no investment in? Or people like myself, who's basically the child's stepfather? Now, I understand that I have an unorthodox relationship, the fact that my wife has a boyfriend, but I was injured, and so I'm not able to, you know, pleasure her in that way anymore, and that she had a, you know, sexual tryst and she got pregnant, and we chose not to get an abortion. Now, I know the abortion would have been the hip way to go, and people would have probably held us as heroes, but my wife decided to have the baby. And now we have this poor baby, little DeMarco, that's in Child Protective Services that I can't get access to, while Donterius is facing 14 years in jail for prior convictions. And then on top of that, the mother, she's all whacked out because we never legally got married, so she's having immigration issues. So now she might get sent, you know, back to the Philippines. So just right now, my life is absolutely horrible. And when I reach out to people in New York City for help, nobody's giving me any help. I'm coming here, trying to ask you, what can you do for me? Because I know AOC is not doing anything. I know Eric Adams isn't doing anything. How can I get my baby back? How can I get my baby back on the hormone therapy and on the medication that they were prescribed? Because if we don't do this, it's going to, the maturation guys, the puberty blockers, if you do not stop the puberty at a young enough age, it could have detrimental effects later on in life with mental health, with suicides. So it's very important that I get little DeMarco back on this medication. So without your guys' help, how am I supposed to get my wife and her boyfriend's baby out of Child Protective Services? Can anybody there give me a game plan or a strategy? Because I'm so sick and tired of this. I'm so sick and tired of being the one that gets abused, not only in my recent relationships, but now with little DeMarco. I can't get him, I'm stressed out. My whole life is turned upside down, and I'm asking for help, and I'm just asking, can you guys please help me?
We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness list now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Deputy Speaker Ayala, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you. This hearing is adjourned.